Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming to the next, last session of Romans. Let me give you the layout. Romans 15:16 today. I go to Omaha next week. And the following week will be an application. I mean, when you come the following week, it's really up to you. But all I'm gonna try to do is to take some of what we've been doing in this Romans class, and then try to apply it to our lives, to the best of my ability. But you, I mean, feel free to come in with your own thoughts on how we apply this book to our lives. So please, please think through that. Then, we're done with Romans. After the Kelshaw Lecture Series, which is May 7th, 8th, and 9th, March, I'm sorry, March 7th, 8th, and 9th. I'm thinking about doing a two or three-week lesson strictly on Romans 9, 10, and 11. That's, it's a hard section, but we just skimmed over the top of it. If you're at all interested, I'm gonna, I'll announce it. We'll be running probably two or three sessions, just looking at Romans 9, 10, and 11. Go a little bit deeper, alright? But you've already, you've already been through Romans, so you're ready to go a little bit deeper, right? I'm also suggesting that we'll do a, somewhere down the road, we'll do a three-week lesson on Habakkuk. Habak or Abbot, who cares? You choose. And so, and that will be titled, I think, "When in Doubt, Complain to God." And so, we'll take a look at that. I think it's a good lesson. I think it's a perfect, it's a nice book to introduce you to both the major and the minor problems. So we'll do like a three-week session on that. And then in September, the middle of September 2014, we'll begin a, probably a lengthy Bible study on the Psalms, the Psalms, okay? So that's, that's what I'm proposing from here on out. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask you to come and be present with us in the power of your Holy Spirit to continue to break open this incredible book, to understand the depth of understanding that Paul has, how he breaks open the gospel for us, in Jesus' name. William Tyndall, William Tyndall, he wrote in 1534, an exhortation about Romans. I guess maybe an appropriate way to look at the final chapters of the Book of Romans. Now go, reader, and follow the order of Paul's writing. First, behold yourself diligently in the law of God, and see there your just condemnation. Second, turn your eyes to Christ and see him, the great mercy of your very kind and loving Father. Third, remember that Christ did not make atonement that you should go again, nor did he cleanse you that you should return as a swine to your puddle again. He wants you to be a new creation and to live a new life, following the will of God and not the sinful nature, okay? This is, this is typical 16th-century language. Let's not mess around here. We're all condemned. We all need the mercy of Christ. And Christ made atonement for us. And because he made atonement for us, let's not go back to our puddles. Let's live a renewed life. Now, that renewed life, of course, comes through in Romans chapter 12, verses 1 and 2, and follows through with his ethics in chapter 12, 13, and 14. And now we turn to chapter 15. And 15, verses 1 through 6, is a direct address to Paul's fellow strong people. Now, who are the strong people? Do you remember from last week, we were talking about weak and strong? Who are the strong people? Remember? If you're shaking your head yes, then you have to answer the question. The strong people are basically the Gentiles. They're strong because they've got control of the church in Rome. The weak people are the Jews, the Jewish Christians, who are hanging on to holidays, Jewish holidays, and the kosher food expectations. And so, now Paul is turning to the stronger people, which means he's turning to the Gentile Christians, and he's laying some stuff on them. Now, there is always a possibility that some of the people in the Church of Rome will agree with Paul, such as Priscilla and Aquila. And they will say, quote, "Finally, our position is being affirmed, and we have a person of authority to state it, so we're right and they're wrong." Those who are anxious about what Paul is saying about the food laws and the Sabbath laws, they might think that Paul is marginalizing them, and they are being forced out of the Church of Rome. So Paul starts to wrap up his serious reprimand of the Roman Christians for having a judgmental attitude towards each other. Okay, Frank, 1 through 6, please. "We who are strong have an obligation to bear with the failings of the weak, and not to please ourselves. Let each of us please his neighbor for his good, to build him up. For Christ did not please himself, but as it is written, the reproaches of those who reproached you fell on me. For whatever was written in former days was written for our instruction, that through endurance and through the encouragement of the Scriptures we might have hope. May the God of endurance and encouragement grant you to live in such harmony with one another in accordance with Christ Jesus, that together you may with one voice glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." Thank you. "We who are strong," verse 1, so Paul is naming himself among the strong. "Remember that the strong are the ones who know that their faith has given them freedom to eat and drink without great restriction. And the strong is the contrast to the weak. And the weak are those who are unable to come to terms with the freedom they have, so their conscience holds on to the old ways." And Paul continues that the strong have an obligation to bear with the failings of the weak. It would be easy to read that, it'd be easy to read that to mean the strong have to put up or endure with the weakness of the weak. Instead, we are to bear up. Means to love. It means to care for each other. It means to be sensitive to the weaknesses of others. Douglas Moo said that the verb "to bear" has the same meaning here that it does in Galatians chapter 2, verse, excuse me, Galatians chapter 6, verse 2, where Paul exhorts believers to bear one another's burdens and so fulfill the law of Christ. This is, this is being concerned and caring about each other. To go back to Genesis, are we our brother's keeper? Yes, we are our brother's keeper. Yes, we are. We are to care for one another and to be concerned about one another. Verse 2, "Let each of us please his neighbor for his good, to build him up." Now, the use of the word "neighbor" may mean that Paul was thinking about Leviticus 19:18 and Romans 13:9. These references are for the love command in the Old Testament and Paul's earlier usage in Romans. Let me read the Romans usage. "You shall love your neighbor as yourself. Love does no wrong to a neighbor; therefore love is the fulfilling of the law." So, what we're talking about here is that we need to be able to love one another. And love, even in the Old Testament, and this is not just a New Testament concept, means that we are going to build each other up. It's not tearing each other down. It's building each other up. Verse 3, "For Christ did not please himself, but as it is written, the reproaches of those who reproached you fell on me." If Christ can give himself up on a cross for everyone, that is, strong and weak, then the strong believers should be able to sacrifice for the weaker. Now, the quote, the verse that we have in verse 3 comes from Psalm 69, verse 9. So Jesus receives the scorn that was directed toward God. The context of Psalm 69, verse 9, is a psalmist who is zealous for the Lord and wants to worship in God's house. Due to the zealous words, the repro, excuse me, excuse me. Due to the zealous words, a realization takes place that those who hate God also hate him. Those who hate God also hate the psalmist. That's what I'm trying to say. The psalmist is saying, "Look, I love God. I'm a zealot for God. I wanna be with God. I wanna be in God's house." And those who condemn God are also condemning the one who is a zealot for God. And so, the "me," let's see if I can find that. So in verse 15, 3, that is Romans 15:3, it's a reference to Jesus, and the "you" in that refers to God. So Paul has taken the psalmist's words and put them on the lips of Jesus. And you're thinking to yourself, well, Paul is sure taking a lot of liberty with the text from the Old Testament. In first century, that was not a big deal. That's exactly what was expected. You could take a piece of Scripture from the Old Testament, and you could apply it to someone, you could apply it to your current text. So what Paul is doing is, "For Christ did not please himself, but as it is written, the reproaches of those who reproach you, God, fell on me, Christ." They hate you, they hate me. And it comes from the psalmist realizing that he loves God. Those who hate God hate him.
Does the reverse also true then? If I hate you, do I by definition hate God?
You know, I didn't read that per se, but I think we probably could make, draw that conclusion. Someone who hates God hates you too, if you're a zealot for God. I think we could probably draw that conclusion. I didn't read that anywhere though. So Paul uses the Psalms as a way of showing the suffering of Jesus. And perhaps Paul is trying to build up those in the Roman Church who are feeling beat down by the attitudes of the weak or the strong on the other. "Oh, you've been in the church long enough, and you know how we can beat each other up." Well, that's what's going on in the Church of Rome. And Paul is saying, "Now, come on now. You know, we gotta build each other up. And you gotta stand with Jesus, just like Jesus stood with God, and God stood with Jesus." So see, this is the good theology that is lived from the top down. "Christ did not please himself, but gave himself for us." So there's a top-down theology, is what I'm trying to say, is that, you know, you understand God, and you understand the relationship between God and Christ, and that works itself down to where we live at that horizontal level as the body of Christ. So that's a sort of a top-down flow, if you will, to the rest of us. Jesus did what he didn't necessarily want to do for us, but he was willing to do it. That's a great statement. I think that's a Colossian statement, an Olympian statement, that Jesus didn't necessarily want to. How do we know that? Well, look at Gethsemane. What does Jesus say there? "Lord, if this cup can pass from me, please let it go." It's not they didn't love you, but he knew what he was about to face. And if he couldn't get, didn't have to do it, well, that was the moment that he asked the Lord, the Father, and the Father said... I'll bet the Father didn't say a word, just like sometimes happens in your life. When you're crying out, you don't hear anything. So Jesus then, did not necessarily want to die, but he did die for you and for me and for all generations, past, present, and future. Verse 4, "For whatever was written in former days was written for our instruction, that through endurance and through the encouragement of the Scriptures we might have hope." Paul gives us a little glimpse into the understanding of salvation history. Douglas Moo said this, and I quote, "Paul pauses here in verse 4 to comment that everything that was written in the past was written to us." That's a, that's a high view of Scripture. That everything that was written in the past was written to us in the present, and those in the future. So that Scripture is living. And Paul addresses hope in this verse. Why? Because the outcome of suffering for the Christian is hope. It's not that you give up hope, but recognizing that you are in Christ, recognizing that what Christ has done for you, and now you share in that suffering with Christ is to bring you hope. Anthony Wright said about verses 3 and 4, that this is the pattern that the Christian follows, paradoxically. This is the way we have hope. Endurance plus encouragement equals hope. Let me say that again. Endurance and encouragement equals hope. This calls down anyone who believes or professes a health and wealth gospel only. What it says is, no, there's a lot of enduring that goes on in our life here today. There's a lot of enduring that we have to do. Now, what are we supposed to do as the body of Christ? We've gotta encourage each other in the midst of the endurance. And what comes out is hope. We can, we can make it to the next, the next time, the next day, the next week, the next year. We can, we can keep going forward with one foot in front of the other. Endurance plus encouragement equals hope. 5 and 6, "May the God of endurance and encouragement grant you to live in such harmony with one another in accordance with Christ Jesus, that together you may with one voice glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." Alright, so 5 and 6, verses 5 and 6 are the, is, excuse me. 5 and 6 is the goal. That's the goal. That's what we're shooting for here. That together you may with one voice glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. You're enduring, you're being encouraged, you've got hope, and you will glorify God no matter what. Douglas Moo once again says that Paul is praying that the Roman Church will transcend their differences, not necessarily by becoming the same opinion, but through a mutual commitment to endurance and encouragement, they become one body. Okay? Subtle, very subtle there. What he's saying is that they will not become one body because they have one opinion, but they become one body as they endure and encourage each other through it. Let's see. Earl, would you do 7?
13?
Yeah, why don't you do 7 to 13? Thank you.
"In a word, accept one another as Christ accepted us to the glory of God." I mean that Christ became a servant of the Jewish people to maintain the truth of God by making good his promises to the patriarchs, and at the same time to give the Gentiles cause to glorify God for his mercy. As Scripture says, "Therefore I will praise thee among the Gentiles and sing hymns to thy name. And again, Gentiles may marry together with his own people. And yet again, all Gentiles praise the Lord, and all peoples praise him." Once again, Isaiah says, "There shall be the Zion..." What's a better word than "Siyan"? What have you got there? Of Jesse? "...the one raised up to govern the Gentiles; on him the Gentiles shall set their hope. And may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace by your faith in him, until by the power of the Holy Spirit you overflow with hope."
Alright, what do we start with in verse 7? What is it? Therefore, there you go. You gotta be sensitive to "therefore" is in "for" is in the Book of Romans. It'll tell you a lot. He's drawing a conclusion. What do you think he's drawing the conclusion from? Okay. Jane, say that again?
They're gonna come together.
Gonna come together?
His argument along about Jews and Gentiles.
Yeah, exactly. Both of you said the same thing. But yeah, specifically, he's now drawing his conclusion from all that previous material about Jew and Gentile, about coming together to become one, just like you said here. So "therefore" is Paul's conclusion. And Paul is returning to the language that he used in chapter 14, verses 1 through 3, to bring his section on unity to a close. So now, Paul urges the Roman Church to welcome one another. In other words, "We may not always agree with one another, but I welcome you, my Gentile brothers and sisters, my Jewish brothers and sisters. I welcome you and all shades of Jewish Christian and Gentile Christians coming together." All shades of them coming together. This is not just to tolerate other believers, but it is to welcome other believers. This has to do with hospitality, a serious, serious theme in all of Scripture, both Old and New Testament. So, look what Paul does again. He tells the gospel story over again. While he reminds the Roman Church that they need to welcome believers, because Christ welcomed them, he then enters into a very brief overview of the gospel again. Now let's pause for a moment. It says here in very strong terms, "Welcome one another as Christ has welcomed you for the glory of God." Welcome one another. The Right Reverend Paul Barnett, who is, I don't know if, he's the, one of the retired bishops of Sydney, Australia. Fabulous scholar. You may have read his commentaries on John, on 1st and 2 Corinthians. He's written several books on the early church that are very good pieces of work. He's a great scholar. He said this, "Welcome" here means to thoroughly welcome. This sense of welcome has a parallel in Luke's narrative of Paul's journey to Rome. Acts, chapter 28, verse 7. Let me just read that. Acts, chapter 28, verse 7. "Now in the neighborhood of that place were lands belonging to the chief man of the island named Publius, who received us and entertained us hospitably for three days." He was, they were received, and they were entertained hospitably, which means they were welcomed in thoroughly. So it sounds a lot like the traditional ancient Near Eastern tradition of hospitality, that you would provide lodging, food, and protection for three days. And you may be able to go beyond three days, but if they discovered that you're a freeloader, they could legally kick you out after three days. So, I mean, there was some leeway here. They didn't want, they didn't want, here's the bottom line. This was happening is that there were, in Judaism, there were false prophets who would go from house to house to house to house to house, gaining food, lodging, and protection. And they would just do that. Well, they put a limit to how many days you could be there if, in case you were a false prophet or a freeloader. And so, but when you were under their roof, you had, you were protected.
So did this begin with Abraham trying to be invited, did it begin?
Yes.
That was like the very first time, was it?
Yeah. Yeah, what it tells us is that hospitality in ancient Near culture goes way back, okay? Yeah, this is, this is not, this is nothing new or modern in any way, shape, form, fashion.
And because they were supposed to be angels, then is that the basis for this welcoming? I mean, because you don't know who it is that's coming to your house?
Oh, that's a good question. You know, and I don't know that I can answer that. I don't have that, that understanding of it. My understanding though is that angel or not, that hospitality was expected.
Do we have any modern example of that?
Good question. Oh, very good. Yeah, thank you, Greta. Yeah, Earl's question, do we have any modern equivalent of that? And Earl's answer is, the Benedictine rule, Saint Benedict, hospitality was of the essence. Phaedas?
I have one. There was a church, a Episcopal church in Atlanta that rang their bells and opened their doors to people who were stranded.
So you're talking about yesterday or the day before?
Yes, so I mean, talk about recent. I mean, but that's where, you know, I mean, they opened the door.
That's right. Very good. Good point, good point. Jay?
In the Middle East, you never turn people away from water. So if they knocked on your door, you give them water.
Right. And that emerges from the hospitality tradition, absolutely. Diane?
But I think Paul is talking about members of the church. Don't quibble about a small step. Truly and honestly welcome other believers despite the differences in the details.
Yep. I hear you, I hear you, yep.
Which I was pondering this, and I'm gonna throw this out. So if Paul were in the room today, we're having this discussion, what do you think he would say about, say, Mormonism and Jehovah's Witness?
Oh, wow. Let's move on. No, let me ponder that. I mean, that's, that's great.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Let me, let me go on a little bit with what Bishop Barnett was talking about. Barnett suggests that 14:1 and 15:7 are bookends of all the material, of a lot of material in between, okay? So Christians who are culturally different, as Jews and Gentiles, were needed to, they needed to welcome each other in. So that's, Barnett is saying that 14:1 and 15:7 are bookends, and all this material in between about Jew and Gentile. What that, what bookends do for us in Scripture is that it highlights the material in between, that this is real important stuff. So Gentiles hated the Jews because the Jews did not worship idols. I'm talking about this in broad, broad terms right now. That the Jews did not worship idols in temples. Instead, they worshiped in the open sky. And the pagans thought that that was absolutely utterly stupid. Why would you just worship, look up to the sky and worship? Well, you gotta, you gotta have a God in front of you to worship, okay? So the Jews had suspicious beliefs about, and the Jews had suspicious beliefs about pigs, that they wouldn't eat them, and they didn't work one day a week, and they were standoffish, because they would not invite a Gentile into their homes. You can begin to see how someone might take offense to all that because they don't understand what's going on at the other level, the deeper, the deeper level. Jews despise the Gentiles for their worship of idols, their uncleanness, and their sexual immorality. Lots of sexual immorality going on among the Romans and the Greeks. So when Jews and Gentiles became Christians, did they leave their baggage behind? Not any better than we leave our baggage behind when we become a Christian. A lot of that baggage has come right along with them. And so, that's what Paul is, Barnett is saying. That's what Paul is dealing with in verses 14:1 through 15:7. It's a lot of baggage that's been brought along over a lot of years of assumptions and misunderstandings of each other. So take a moment and consider... So take a moment and consider what Paul is asking of these culturally different people who are to be brothers and sisters at the same table. He's asking a loss. Paul is asking the Roman Christians to exercise charity to one another. Now, the work of God continues no matter what, but it continues in the special way of the work of a welcoming congregation. That is not just good etiquette. Welcoming one another into the body of Christ is crucial for the gospel. That's Bishop Barnett. "Make a straight line to someone you don't know, please," he said to his congregations. "Do not make a beeline to someone you do know." This really resonates with me, because I've told you this before. I apologize if you're worried to death with it. When I was doing my doctoral studies, for four months of my doctoral studies was in London, and I was studying under Dr. John Stock. I, he took us to Saint Andrews in North London. And Saint Andrews was an Anglican, it's an Anglican church, right smack in the middle of one of the most culturally diverse places in the whole wide world. There in North London, you had Africans from the continent of Africa, every flavor of African, every flavor of Caribbean, some people from the Caribbean, from Central America, from South America, from Eastern Europe. I mean, it was amazing to see how many different cultures were living in that piece of real estate in North London. And there, in the middle of it, is this place called Saint Andrews Anglican Church. And the rector in that Anglican church took Paul seriously and believed that there needed to be, they needed to break down the cultural differences. So people came to Saint Andrews for their worship, and it was, it was good worship, by the way. And, but the real work took place at coffee hour. Why do you think coffee hour was such an issue? What do you think? David?
I know the answer to this because you already told us. He didn't want us to be doing our inner circles.
Right.
He wanted us to face outward.
That's right.
And look at the person that we didn't necessarily have, know. Maybe they were brand new to the church or brand new to me anyway. And so that's what he meant that.
That's right. And this rector said, he said, "I can preach all day long, but I'll tell you what wipes me out, is trying to keep cultural circles broken up during coffee hour." One hour of coffee hour would wipe him out. Because the Nigerians would circle up, and even within the Nigerians, the Jaws Nigerians would circle up, and then, and the Barbados group over here, and the, you know, you know what I'm talking about. Circles all over their parish hall of like-minded people. And he would go and he'd bust right into the middle of their circle and say, "Move out, move out, move out." So they would turn and they would go, and he'd run over and, "Move out, move out." And then he'd break them all up and he'd turn around and they'd all be back together. He said, "It's exhausting." But he was so committed to what Paul is saying here that he staked his whole ministry on trying to create an intercultural experience for the, for his congregation, okay? And I think that's what Barnett's also saying to us. We have a tendency, though maybe not as culturally diverse as what I'm describing in North London, but we have a tendency to go towards the like-minded people, those whom we know. And we need to be more outward-facing as congregations, okay? That's all verse seven. I apologize for taking so much time on that, but it's really a nugget, and it really has some strong impact. And Diane, I'm gonna think about your question. That's hard, but. But I suspect Paul would say, "What you're gonna do is you're gonna overwhelm them with love. Whoever walks through that door, you're gonna overwhelm them with love." Because that really becomes the bottom line for Paul. Okay. "For I tell you," verse eight, "that Christ became a servant to the circumcised to show God's truthfulness in order to confirm the promises given to the patriarchs." "For I tell you..." This is more Paul's rhetorical style. We've seen his rhetorical style from chapter two through chapter eleven, and now he reverts back to it. "And verse nine, 'in order that the Gentiles might glorify God for His mercy.'" Douglas Muu says, it beautifully, verses eight and nine beautifully captures the fine balance Paul preserves in Romans between the priority of the Jew, Christ came as a servant to the Jews, and the full inclusion of the Gentiles. Christ's ministry to the Jews fulfills God's promise to, and so enables Gentiles also to glorify God for His mercy. Now, Paul supports his statement in eight and nine by citing Old Testament verses. He's done this from chapter one. He makes his statement, and then he goes to Scripture, and he begins to support it. How does he support it? Well, remember, we saw, we saw the spirit of Jesus' beatitude show up in his, I think in chapter twelve, in chapter thirteen. But by and large, he's gonna go to the Old Testament, the Hebrew scriptures, to support his statements. "So, 'it is written, therefore, I will praise you among the Gentiles and sing to your name.'" That's Psalm eighteen, verse forty-nine. "And again it is said, rejoice, O Gentiles, with his people." Deuteronomy thirty-two, verse forty-three. "And again, praise the Lord, all you Gentiles, and let all the peoples extol him." Psalm one-seventeen-one. "And again Isaiah says, the root of Jesse will come; even he will arise to rule the Gentiles; in him will the Gentiles hope." Isaiah eleven, verse ten. So look at Paul's abbreviated telling of the gospel in verses eight and nine. "Christ became a servant to the Jews. Christ came to the Jew first, and then the Gentile." Why? Remember, this is a basic theme of the letter. God's promises to the Jews had to be fulfilled as a demonstration of His righteousness. How do, how do we define the righteousness of God? God's faithfulness. So why, why does the gospel go to the Jews first? Because God is fulfilling His obligation, basically in the Abrahamic covenant, that all nations will come from His seed. And so He is fulfilling His obligation to His word that goes all the way back to Abraham. God is a righteous God, which means He is a faithful God. So when Israel is blessed, the world will be blessed too. That's part of what's being said in the Abrahamic covenant, is that when Israel is blessed, the world is blessed too because they have come into the covenant family. And that's the beauty of justification by faith. That's the beauty of being made righteous as a Gentile, is that invitation to come into the covenant family, to be brought into the family. Conclusion. Verse thirteen. "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that by the power of the Holy Spirit you may abound in hope." This is Paul's prayer wish, that God will work among the Roman church in such a way that the unity that he urges on them will become a reality. Paul wants the whole community, community to be working together and praying together, and above all, worshiping together, not at odds with each other. They are bound together in one story. They are bound together in one Messiah. They are bound together with one Messiah, one story, to go out into the world. Now, there are some key words in this little section here, hope, joy, and peace. And the only way that this prayer will be a reality is through the power of the Holy Spirit. And only when the Jewish Christians and the Gentile Christians rejoice and praise God together, will the community be a model for kingdom living, when all are at the same table. Now, this concludes the argument that we began back in Romans, chapter one, verses eighteen and following. So if you wanna go home, this is the time to do it, because the argument is over. Chapter one, verse eighteen is concluded now in chapter fifty, verse thirteen. Now, what's the summary of the argument? The book of Romans unfolds with the tension between the individual and the community. And the answer we receive is that through the good news, God transforms individuals and forms a community. And those individual Christians are Jewish Christians and Gentile Christians, and they make up a diverse community. And that diverse community is often in need of reconciliation among races, ethnic groups, and nations. Paul emphasizes how we are God's people, that we as God's people should function as a single, united body. Paul wants the church to be a place that transcends cultural, ethnic, and racial divisions in a unity based on the gospel. And to carry this argument further, there are some significant theological issues that are held by Christians and the whole, the whole body of Christians. And one of the questions we have to consider is if those differences impact our ability to worship together. That becomes the bottom line in our ecumenical gatherings together. When we gather together, do our differences mean that we cannot worship together? If our differences mean we cannot, then there's some significant, probably some significant ideological stuff going on there. But if our differences are about food and holidays and that other stuff that's debatable, then we probably ought to be worshiping together in spite of our differences. Paul's theological argument starts out. Let's review Paul's theological argument. Seems, I think everything just wiped out. All right, I don't know how I did that. We're all sinners in need of God's salvation, okay? That's the way the argument starts out, chapter one, verse eighteen through chapter three, verse something or other, twelve or thirteen. "That means that both Jew and Gentile are guilty and in need of God's grace." Romans three-twenty-three, "For all are sinners, and fall short of the glory of God." "However, salvation goes to the Jews first, and then to the Gentiles second." We've already talked about that, because the promises given to the patriarchs, that Abraham's descendants will be as numerous as the stars are in the sky. God will fulfill His word with the Jew, and salvation will then flow to the Gentiles. There was a huge rejection of God's plan of salvation to the Jew through the Messiah, Jesus. So there was rejection. Not everybody bought into this idea of Jesus being Messiah. And so this salvation, fulfillment of the big picture with the Abrahamic covenant already fell on difficult times with the Jews, because they did not accept Jesus as their Messiah. Still reaching out to the Jews, the righteous God empowered Gentiles to come into the family of God. So God didn't give up. God continues to invite the Jews into receiving their Messiah. And the Jews had to come to terms with God inviting Gentiles into the covenant family. How does God move on with this? By inviting the Gentiles to come into the covenant family. What did that do for the Jews? Really made them mad. So the Jews had to come to terms with inviting Gentiles into the covenant family. And the Gentiles had to come to terms with what? They had to come to, they had to come to terms with accepting the fact that salvation does come through the Jews and their God. So both are, both are true. You see the tension that's developing. Paul is saying, yep, now get over it. Surprise and disappointment. Get over your surprise and disappointment and get on with moving the good news to the West. And that's a broad brush interpretation of Paul's argument or conclusion, but I think it's a fair one. Come on, get over it. Let's embrace one another, and let's get on with what's really important. That's the good news of Jesus, and let's start moving to the West. So to quote Ephesians in the Episcopal baptismal liturgy, "There is one body and one spirit, just as you were called to, the one hope that belongs to you." "One Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God and Father of all, who is over all and through all and in all." So we are justified by faith. We are made righteous. We are one in the family of God. Now, if fifteen-fourteen and following, that's the rest of this chapter, it lays out for us the purpose for the letter to the church of Romans, of Rome. Yeah, okay, let me say that again. Fifteen, chapter fifteen, verse fourteen, to the end of this book, now lays out for us the purpose of the letter of Romans. And you know what? If I do this course ever again, I think I'm gonna start with with chapter fifty, verse fourteen, at least through fifty, through thirty or thirty-two. I think I'm gonna start there at that point, because it lays out kind of the purpose of why he's writing this. Paul kind of gets to the end of it and says, "Well, this is why I wrote this." And I think it would help us if we had this up front to understand that. Okay, Anne, I want you to read verses fourteen through the end.
"I myself am satisfied about you, my brothers, that you yourselves are full of goodness, filled with all knowledge, and able to instruct one another. But on some points I have written to you very boldly by the way of reminder, because of the grace given me by God, to be a minister of Christ Jesus to the Gentiles in the priestly service of the gospel of God, so that the offering of the Gentiles may be acceptable, sanctified by the Holy Spirit. In Christ Jesus then, I have reason to be proud of my work for God. For I will not venture to speak of any things except what Christ has accomplished through me to bring the Gentiles to obedience, by word and deed, by the power of signs and wonders, by the power of the Spirit of God, so that from Jerusalem and all the way around the Littoral I have fulfilled the ministry of the gospel of Christ. And thus I make it my ambition to preach the gospel, not where Christ has already been named, lest I build on somebody else's foundation. But as it is written, 'Those who have never seen, never been told, will see; and those who have never heard, will understand.' This is the reason why I have been so often been hindered from coming to you. But now, since I no longer have any room for work in these regions, and since I have longed for many years to come to you, I hope to see you in passing as I go to Spain, and to be helped on my journey thereby, once I have enjoyed your company for a while. At present, however, I am going to Jerusalem, bringing aid to the saints, for Macedonia and Ekkia have been apleased to make some contribution for the poor among the saints at Jerusalem. They were pleased to do it, and indeed they owe it to them. For if the Gentiles have come to share in their spiritual blessings, they ought also to be of service to them in material blessings. When therefore I have completed this and have delivered to them what has been collected, I will leave for Spain by way of eunuch. I know that when I come to you I will come in fullness of the blessing of Christ. And feel, you brothers, by our Lord Jesus Christ and by the love of the Spirit to strive together with me in your prayers to God on my behalf, that I may be delivered from antlers and judeah, and that my service for Jerusalem may be acceptable to the saints, so that by God's will I may come." so that by God's will I may come to you with joy and be refreshed in your company. May the God of peace be with you all. Amen."
Okay. So Paul is encouraging the Roman church, and yet like any church, there will be points that the church does not measure up. At those points, for the Roman church, Paul has been bold. Why has he been so bold? Because he is the apostle to the Gentiles and a fellow Jew. Notice that he has given them a reminder, which means that he has not given them new information. In Paul's mind, he has simply given them the gospel that everyone else has received. No new information in the book of Romans, according to Paul. Basically, he's saying, you ought to know this. And so I'm just reminding you what everybody else knows in the known Christian world. And in verses 15 through 17, Paul refers to the grace God gave him to be a minister to the Gentiles. What does it mean to be a minister? It has a priestly connotation to it, perhaps saying that the offering of the Gentiles will be acceptable to God. In other words, Paul, a minister to the Gentiles, has a priestly connotation to it that he's offering these Gentiles to God. This is an acceptable offering to you, God, these people who have a heart to find you, to know you. Now, the priestly duty is also one of proclamation in preaching and teaching. So that's why I can comfortably kind of go into this priestly understanding of minister, because that's also what priests do, in terms of proclamation. You also know, that many of you know, my teaching on the priesthood of all believers, and that means that you too share in that responsibility of offering to God prayers and intercessions, and your own teaching and witness to the Lord. Where? To the nations outside the walls of your church. So you too share in this priestly idea of being a minister. Now, Douglas Mu says this. "Paul pictures himself as a priest, using the gospel as the means by which he offers his Gentile converts as a sacrifice acceptable to God. But like the animal sacrifices of the old economy, these new sacrifices also must be sanctified by the Holy Spirit if they are to be acceptable." Now, one of the things that we have learned from the book of Romans is Paul's dislike of boasting. However, he says that he is proud of his work. So pride is something good when it is in what God has done through you. Credit and achievement is given to God, that's okay. But when you start taking on the accolades for yourself, as the one who's doing it all on your own, that's the boasting and pride that Paul comes down and enjoys, as he did it hard in the book of Romans. In verse 18, we're told more about the grace that Paul is referring to, or the grace that was given to him. We know this because of the fore in verse 8, 18, that starts the sentence. Remember, the fore is giving further explanation of the previous material. "For I will not venture to speak of anything except what Christ has accomplished through me to bring the Gentiles to obedience, by word and deed, by the power of signs and wonders, by the power of the Spirit of God, so that from Jerusalem and all the way around to..." I can't say this. "...Elasirium..." I know I butchered that. "...I have fulfilled the ministry of the gospel of Christ." Paul is not going to say more than he can say or what he has said. It is word and deed through the power of the Holy Spirit that will bear witness to what Paul has said. So he's not gonna say anymore. No more needs to be said, but it will be confirmed now through the power of the Holy Spirit that what he has said is true, and he's not gonna draw any more attention to himself. Now, let's pause for a moment, because now we're getting into Acts. And so we better take a kind of a map break and get oriented. I can't even say it. How would you pronounce that?
Lyricum.
Lyricum, yeah, Lyricum, very good, thank you. I just couldn't get it. See, notice Lyricum is up there in the northwest corner of the region of Macedonia. Macedonia is a massive place, okay? Notice where Philippi is, over here, remember? Paul's letter to the Philippians. There's Thessalonica, Paul's 1 and 2 letters to the Thessalonians. Down here is Athens, you've got Corinth, and this is the region of Aeaea. Now, where is Rome? You see the boot of Italy right over there. Now, just drop down about an inch or two under Ilorilicium, and go all the way over to the Mediterranean Sea, and you've got Rome, okay? So I couldn't get a big enough picture to get all this in. So Rome is on the Mediterranean side of Italy, just straight over about two inches below the northwest corner of Macedonia. Okay? So anyway, that sort of gives you a visual of what Paul's referring to. And by the way, the northwest part up there could be easily considered Albania and Yugoslavia and that kind of thing. So does that help you? Paul's heart's desire is to take the gospel beyond where he has already been. So he's saying, this is where we've been, and now he wants them to now begin to catch a vision to head across the Mediterranean. Verses 20 and 21. "And thus I make it my ambition to preach the gospel, not where Christ has already been named, lest I build on someone else's foundation; but as it is written, 'Those who have never been told of him will see, and those who have never heard, will understand.'" So now we've got future travel plans, and this shows up in verses 22 through 29. "This is the reason why I have so often been hindered from coming to you. But now, since I no longer have any room for work in these regions, and since I have longed for many years to come to you, I hope to see you in passing as I go to Spain, and to be helped on my journey thereby you, once I have enjoyed your company for a while." So this is why I think we probably ought to start the book of Romans with this section of chapter 15, because he's laying it out. He's saying, look, this is where I've been, this is where I want to go, I want to stop along the way. By the way, you can help me, you know? He's laying out the reason for his coming, for his desire to come. Now, there's some urgency in Paul's desire to take the message out. N.T. Wright believes that Paul wants as many people to come to know the gospel before the siege of Jerusalem and the massive chaos with four emperors that will succeed one another from 69 A.D. to 70 A.D., while others believe that Paul's urgency is because of the end of the world and the second coming of Christ, that is, the judgment to understanding to. What's his urgency to get the gospel to the West? Well, N.T. Wright, who is a historian/theologian, believes that historically, Paul believed that there was a major chaos coming. The major chaos, N.T. Wright believes, is that he understood that Rome at some point might take Jerusalem. That would cause a huge shake in Judaism and a huge shakeup for Jewish Christians also. And so he wants as many people as possible to get on board, because being in the gospel will give you an understanding of what's happening. So that's N.T. Wright's thesis. Most other people, I think I can say that with some certainty, most other theologians look at this section and say his urgency is the second coming of Christ. The urgency is much larger than the sacking of Jerusalem. I don't know what's right or wrong. Both are, in one sense, both are correct. But I tend to lean towards the bigger picture answer to this, and that Paul has a sense of urgency about getting the gospel to the West because of the second coming of Christ. He wrote about the second coming of Christ early on in his writings. His first letters went to first and second Thessalonians. And what was the issue, the presenting issue? Well, a major section of the church in Thessalonica believed that Christ was coming so soon that they quit their jobs, they went up on the hill, they camped out, and they sang kumbaya, hoping for the Lord to come as soon as possible. And he found out about this. He found out that the other people in the body of Christ in Thessalonica had to trudge up the hill every day to feed these people, and it was getting old. And so Paul writes and says, basically, look, get back to work, be productive. You don't know when Christ is coming. And so that theme in Paul is big. And he was steadily realizing that Christ was not coming back right then, but he could come anytime. So that's my justification. Verses 25 through 29. Paul is going to Jerusalem with the gifts given to sustain the church of Jerusalem. "At present, however, I am going to Jerusalem, bringing aid to the saints, for Macedonia and Aeaea." So you've got that in your mind now. Macedonia is Philippi, Thessalonica, and Aeaea with Athens and Corinth. Let's see. Verse 27. "For they were pleased to do it, and indeed they owe it to them; for if the Gentiles have come to share in their spiritual blessings, they ought also to be of service to them in material blessings. When therefore I have completed this and have delivered to them what has been collected, I will leave for Spain by way of you. I know that when I come to you, I will come in the fullness of the blessing of Christ." Why did he send this letter ahead? He wants them to know he's coming, that he's got them on his radar screen. He also wants them to know that he knows the issues that they're wrestling with. And he wants to give them an opportunity to begin to pull together as one body, because he has a bigger picture for them than he's just saying here, I think. So he then wants to come to Rome for the purpose of reclaiming the name of Jesus. Paul wants to ensure that a strong, healthy Jewish Christian congregation and Gentile Christian congregation will help him move the gospel to the West. He doesn't want to move the gospel to the West with a divided congregation. He wants to be able to point back to Rome, which would be those brand-new converts in the West. That would be their closest connection to the body of Christ. He wants to be able to point back to them and say, hey, like that church back there, that's what I want you to look like too. So Jew plus Gentile equals a strong church on Gentile soil in the West. Paul is intentional that through any turmoil, the church will be a network of Jew and Gentile congregations that will stand firm, that they will be bright lights without ethnic, gender, class controversy, loving, serving, and worshiping side by side for the sake of Christ. Isn't that a wonderful model? Isn't that what we want too? I would say, yes, it is. How we get there is hard work, and Paul, in his boldness, has undertaken them hard work. Okay, requests for prayer. 15, verses 30 through 32. Now, this is N.T. Wright. Paul is very specific that the church at Rome pray for the success of this visit to Jerusalem. Let me ask you. Why would Paul care that the Roman church pray for the success of his visit, revisit, to the Jerusalem church? What do you think?
It's unity again.
It's unity? And it's very specific? What is Paul bringing back to the Jerusalem church? Money, yeah, money, resources. Why does he care about the Jerusalem church?
It's one of the problems. It's still struggling.
Still struggling. It's home. It's the center from which Christianity had its beginnings. What political stuff is going on in the church of Rome?
Resources.
You say that, Nancy?
Peter.
Peter's there, yeah, Peter's there.
In Jerusalem, they don't agree, do they?
That's right, there's not disagreement, yeah.
Yeah, and plus I think the unity of the gift was what comes and ends.
Yes.
Yes, it's like, no, wait, let me tell you who this is from. This isn't from this one sect. This is one from this is.
Yeah.
And how better to model that for Jerusalem?
That's right, exactly. You're all right on. Specifically, he's saying, you know what? You're bickering about those Gentile Christians out there and those Jewish Christians, who by the way, have, some of them, their conscience is being freed, and they're not following the food restrictions any longer and all this kind of stuff in the Jerusalem church, which is ethnically pretty pure. And they can follow the Jewish holidays, and they can follow the dietary restrictions. They're bickering about those Gentiles. They just don't get it. Paul is bringing money back from those Gentiles who just don't get it. Out of their own poverty, they have given of themselves to help this struggling Jewish congregation in Jerusalem. And it's a statement of unity. It's a statement of, what's going on here, leadership? You know? Yeah, what's, yeah, yeah. Oh my gosh, this is resources. Nothing touches the heart more than money. I'm sorry. So he's feeling the risk of persecution back there? Personal persecution himself? Yes, yes. Yeah, he's willing to risk that, yes, he is. Yeah. That's why he's...
Essentially, because we know the rest of the story, having read Acts.
Right.
And so you begin to put this in the context, and it's, well, things kind of go awry, as you might say.
Yeah.
And he does get to Rome, but not quite in the way that he...
It's wonderful to know the end of the story, doesn't it, at this point? Because he does get back to Rome. But his picture of coming back and the Lord's purpose in that are different.
Which is a lesson for us.
Yes, it is a lesson for us, you're right. So Paul is inviting the Roman church to join in his concern for intercessory prayer, that this is successful, it'll build unity between the Jerusalem church and the other churches in Asia Minor, and now in Rome. And so this is a good thing. Everyone needs to be about this. Verse 33. "May the God of peace be with you all." Paul provides his own prayer for the Roman church. "May the God who gives peace be with you, Roman church." So now 15 has just come to an end. Now we're at 16, and we need... Let's see. Greta, I need you to read. Take us 16:1 through, big section here. Is it 17? Okay, let's go 16:1 through 16.
"I recommend to you our sister Phoebe, a servant of the church at Cyrra, that you may welcome her and the Lord in a way worthy of the saints, and help her in whatever she may need from you; for she is the patron of many and of myself as well. Greet Triska and Aquila, my fellow workers in Jesus Christ, who risked their necks for my life, to whom not only I give thanks, but all the churches of the Gentiles give thanks as well. Greet also the church in their house. Greet my beloved Etneetus, who was the first convert to Christ in Asia. Greet Mary, who has worked hard for you. Greet Anjuniya, my kinsmen and my fellow prisoners; they are all well-known to the apostles, and they were in Christ before me. Greet Antolantis, my beloved in the Lord. Greet Urbanus, our fellow worker in Christ, and my beloved Stikus. Greet Apellus, who is approved in Christ. Greet those who belong to the family of Aristobulus. Greet my kinsmen Herodian. Greet those in the Lord who belong to the family of Narcissus. Greet those workers in the Lord, Phineah and Triodosa. Greet the beloved Persis, who has worked hard in the Lord. Greet Rufus, chosen in the Lord, also his mother, who has..." Greet Rufus, chosen in the Lord, also his mother, who has been a mother to me as well. Greet Aschyrus, Christus, and Philagian, Hermes, Patrobus, Hermes, and the brothers who are with them. Greet Philogius, Julia, Narcissus, and his sister, and Olympus, and all the saints who are with them. Greet one another with a holy kiss. All the churches of Christ greet you. I appeal to you, brothers, to watch out for those who cause divisions and create obstacles contrary to the doctrines that you've been taught. Avoid them, for such persons do not serve our Lord but their own appetites, and by smooth talk and flattery they deceive the hearts of the naive. For your obedience is known to all, so that I will rejoice over you, but I want you to be wise as to what is good and innocent, and as to what is evil. The, the God of peace will soon crush Satan under your feet. The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with you. Timothy, my fellow worker, greet you, so does Lucius and Jason and Sosipater, my kinsmen. I, Tertuus, who wrote this letter, greet you in the Lord. Gaius, who is host to me and the whole church, greet you. Erastus, the city treasurer, and our brother Portus, greet you. Now, to him who is able to strengthen you according to my gospel and the preaching of Jesus Christ, according to the revelation of the mystery, that was kept secret for long ages, but has now been disclosed, and through the prophetic writings has been made known to all nations according to the command of the eternal God, to greet about the obedience of faith to the only wise God, to the glory forevermore through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
What did Greta ever do to you, you think?
This, this was her canonical exam, and she passed it, she is now a deacon in the church.
You can tell I didn't read the last line, can't you? Bless your heart.
Well, welcome to the greetings. Paul covers about every single person he can think of so that nobody can feel snug. And you know what? After, after writing my annual meeting report, I know exactly how he feels. You gotta cover absolutely everybody, and you know you're gonna miss somebody. All congregations are alike at that level. So I commend to you our sister Phoebe, a servant of the church in Synchrea. There it is. Synchrea basically is a suburb of Corinth. Okay, they're very close. And that you may welcome her in the Lord in a way worthy of the saints, and help her in whatever she may need from you, for she has been a patron of many and of myself as well. So, the chapter begins with the letters of recommendation. Douglas Muus quotes, "People who traveled in an age with few public facilities, such as hotels and restaurants, depend on the assistance of people they had sometimes never met for their personal needs." So, so this, this, you know, Phoebe's coming, Roman church, she's a good lady. In fact, there's some suggestion that she may even be a deacon. She may even be a leader within the, the leadership.
Did she carry the letter?
That's a good possibility, isn't it?
Would that be a big thing for a woman to be a deacon to do something like that?
Uh, yes, it would, it would in normal ancient Near Eastern culture. Maybe a little less in the Roman and Greek culture. But in the church, in the church, you know, that, they would, I mean, women were actually elevated in the church far more than the other cultures. So, yeah, that's a good thought, it really is. I wonder if she isn't though.
Well, my footnote says that too. It says, "Phoebe was highly regarded in the church, and she may have delivered this letter from Corinth to Rome." This provides evidence that women had important roles in the early church.
Yeah. Did she have, did she have an underarm?
What's that?
Couldn't talk about herself?
She was wealthy.
Because she had an underarm?
Yeah, she would have some, yeah, she probably would have some going with her, yeah, for protection. Even the Pax Romana had its bad guys, you know, the, the peace of Rome. So, yeah, yeah, very good, thank you, good observation, that just went right past my head. I know that Phoebe, Phoebe basically has, has a, has an important role in, in the church that she's coming from, and so she's, she's now got the letter perhaps, and she certainly has Paul's blessing to, to, to the Roman church to treat her well. So she is a diakonos, she is a deacon. Or not, I mean, the question is, are all Christians called servants and called deacons? Well, yes. But the question is, is there a particular leadership role in her, in her diakonal responsibilities as a servant? That's the big question. Acts, chapter eighteen, verse eighteen. "After this, Paul stayed many days longer, and then took leave of the brothers and set sail for Syria. And with them, Priscilla and Aquila, at Synchrea, he had cut, he had cut his hair, for he was under bound." So Synchrea is the eastern port city of Corinth. It's located on the east end of the Isthmus, connecting mainland Greece with the Peloponnesians. And Phoebe served the church in, in Synchrea, and it was there that Paul shaved his head before sailing for Syria in eighteen eighteen. So, that is, it's chapter eighteen, verse eighteen. In verse two, we get more information about Phoebe, "For she has been a patron of many and myself." So she is, she is serving, has served many people, and she serves, has served Paul himself. Now, in verses three through fifteen, we have the exhortation to greet one another. And this is a big list, but it is not the only time Paul has listed individual greetings. He did this in Colossians, chapter four, verse fifteen, and Second Timothy, chapter four, verse nineteen. And one reason for this list is to establish good relationships with the church at Rome. In addition, it was a good way for the church to hear how many people had already had cross-fertilization with Paul. How many people already knew what Paul taught, and what Paul's theology was, and his passion? And, and so this was, this was good PR for Paul. So they begin to say, "Oh, in that little house church there is so-and-so, and that one over there, and that one over there, and that one..." Oh my gosh, Paul has really got great influence upon us. Which is part of, which is, I think, a good observation, is that Paul has influenced a lot of people. And a lot of people were going to Rome, because that was the center of it all, of the, of economics and politics. And so a lot of people would come into Rome. There are a lot of people already in Rome who have had cross-fertilization with Paul. And Paul's kind of saying that. And so some people believe that maybe, maybe he had to come down hard on the Gentiles in verses one through six, as we pointed it out in verse, in chapter fifteen, because now they were sort of feeling good about themselves. You know, "I know Paul, he named me, and, 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 yeah, he's right, and we better start doing that," you know? So, so he's trying to calm everybody down, but he wants the Roman church to know that he has a lot of influence there already. So, greet Priscilla and Aquila, my fellow workers, "who risked their neck for my life, to whom not only I give thanks, but all the churches of Gentile, of the Gentiles give thanks as well." Priscilla, I'm in verses three, three and four. Priscilla, Prisca, Prisca, that's another possible spelling of her name, but Prisca or Priscilla is, is named before Aquila. Aquila's the man. By the way, I, I met a Episcopal priest a couple years ago whose name is Aquila. I know, he kind of looks at you and goes, "Yeah, I know." It's weird, but that's my view. So.
Parents will insist on naming their children after Bible characters, won't they?
Yes, they will, even the most obscure, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Paul refers to them as fellow workers, and that means that this is a term that they are fellow ministers. They're, they're together on the same cause. And Luke tells us that the couple traveled to Corinth after fleeing Rome because of the edict of Claudius, and this is eighteen, three, Acts eighteen, three. And it was in Ephesus where Priscilla and Aquila spoke to Apollos, and that's in eighteen, Acts eighteen, thirty, twenty-four through twenty-eight. And what's interesting there is that it was, it was Priscilla and Aquila who took Apollos, what's his name? Apollos aside, and basically said, "Man, you've got the right stuff, you're preaching all the right stuff. Now let me give you, let us give you the big picture here, and realize..." And, and he got excited, because he was already preaching the good news, and he moves out then from, from Ephesus. So they were instrumental, they really understand Paul, they understand Paul's theology, and they really are co-ministers with Paul. Apparently, the couple spent some time in Ephesus before returning to Corinth, when the edict had been lifted, so they returned to Rome. So the edict has been lifted, they returned to Rome, now they're in Rome, Paul is addressing them specifically. Let's see. Epentius, does that, does that sound right? Greta, how would you pronounce that?
It's like that.
Okay. It's only mentioned, he's only mentioned here, but Paul refers to him as "my dear friend", that is, "my beloved." So we don't know anything about him, but there is a relationship there, they're, they're close. He was converted to Christ in the province of Asia, and Paul remembered that. Verse six, "Greet Mary, who has worked hard for you." Mary was a common Jewish and Gentile name, and Paul praises her work for the Roman church. "Greet Andronicus and Junia, my kinsmen and my fellow prisoners, they are well-known to the apostles, and they were in, they, they were in Christ before me." So Andronicus and Junia are the most debated names in this whole list. They are relatives of Paul, and they have been imprisoned with Paul, which means they are supporters of the gospel. Andronicus is a male name, but Junia can go either way. And, and so who cares whether it goes either way? Well, I'll tell you who cares. The two are referred to as apostles. So if Junia is feminine, then this is a scriptural support for women in leadership positions, okay? That's why it's a significant statement. The other question is how Paul can call them apostles anyway, because they were not there as eyewitnesses of the, of the death, of the life death and resurrection of Christ. Of course, Paul may be using apostles in the broader sense, that the, broader than the twelve apostles. Instead, he may mean those who are messengers, and that is a literal translation of the Greek word apostolos. Or it can be a reference to being a commissioned missionary. We don't know, but there is, we've got the argument. That's why for, for some people, it's very significant whether she's male or he, he, she's a he, or he's a she. Ampleatus, Urbanus, Stiki, I guess? Appellus, they're members of the household of Erestabulus. And this is the only place that we have their name. We don't know anything beyond, beyond that. However, we have Paul's affectionately loved concerning Stakkies. "Greet my kinsmen, Herodian." This is interesting. Herodian is a name we have never heard before. Some say that he may have been a freed slave of Herod, who took the name of his master. Narcissus is also a freed, freed slave, and there was a Narcissus who gained prominence in service to Claudius, the emperor. However, there is no evidence that he ever became a Christian. The slave Narcissus committed suicide before Paul wrote Romans, so many don't think this is the same man as being the famous slave. However, there is a huge connection that historians make between him and, and the, the important slave. "Greet those workers, Triphina and Trifus, Trifusa, and greet the beloved Persis. Triphania, Trifosis, and Persia are mentioned only here. Rufus, oh, this is fascinating. Rufus, Mark fifteen, verse twenty-one, "And they compelled the passerby, Simon of Cyrene, who was coming in from the country, the father of Alexander, and Rufus, to carry his cross. And they brought him to a place called Golgotha, which meets the place of Skoll." What does church tradition tell us? Church tradition tells us that Rufus, in particular, became bishop in the first century. Is that suggested in the "chosen in the Lord" that Paul references towards Rufus? We're never told about Simon's wife, that always puzzles me, why we're never told about Simon's wife. She must have really been surprised when those, when the boys came home from Passover, because apparently it completely changed the whole family's life. So, Ascentricus, Philagian, Hermes, Patrobus, Hermes, these are the brothers. And Philogius, Julia, Narcissus, his sisters, and Olympus, they're all saints. Now, there's no single person in this list who is known, and maybe they are part of a house church, because I think it's probably a pretty good reference. Verse sixteen, sixteen A, greet one another with a holy kiss. The holy kiss was a standard form of greeting in the world, and specifically in the Jewish world. And by the second century, the kiss of peace had become a normal part of Christian liturgy. Muus suggests that maybe Paul is telling the church to finish its formal reading of the letter with a holy kiss. That's interesting. I, I kind of subscribe to that, you know, he's saying, he's suggesting, you know, you've been through this, you need to come together, give each other a holy kiss. I, I ask you to please be careful in our culture in today's age that you not do too many holy kisses during the passing of the peace.
Is that what we see particularly with, in Arab countries, that kiss on each cheek?
Yeah.
I think they do it in France as well.
Oh, yeah.
And other cultures?
Yeah, for sure.
It's on each cheek?
Yep, yeah, it's, it's agreeing, yeah. "All the churches of Christ greet you." So Paul is understanding that the unity of the church, the, the body of Christ, and that he, he as a missionary who has started many churches is saying, "Hey, look, we all greet you, we're all one in Christ." "Timothy, my fellow worker, greet you, as do Lucius and Jason and Sosipater, my kinsmen." So Timothy, Timothy is his closest worker in ministry, and he is identified as a co-writer with Paul in six of his letters. Second Corinthians, First and Second Thessalonians, Philippians, Colossians, and Philaeum. Lucius, well, Lucius of Cyrene, in Acts thirteen, one. Now, there were in the church at Antioch prophets and teachers, Barnabas, Simon, who was called Niger, Lucius of Cyrene, Anan, a lifelong friend of Herod the Tetra, and Saul. So Lucius may be one, maybe this guy in Acts thirteen, or he could be Luke, the gospel writer Luke, who also wrote the book of Acts. Jason, the one who offered hospitality to Paul during his stay in Thessalonica, and that's in Acts seventeen, five through nine. Sosipater, there's a, there's a Sopater in Berea, of Berea, and that's in Acts twenty, verse four and five. Verse twenty-two, "I, Tertuus, who wrote this letter, greet you in the Lord." Notice, it's, Tertuus is a trained scribe, and names himself, he is, he is, he's a professional letter writer, okay? The only, the only letter that we know Paul wrote on his own was Galatians, because he says at the end, "I wrote every word of this on my own," you know? He didn't use somebody else to, to write it. And this is the only reference we have to this man in the New Testament. "Gaius is host to me, and the whole church greet you. Erastus, the city treasurer, and our brother Portus greet you." Gaius is a common name, but it may have been the same man named in Corinth, First Corinthians, chapter one, verses fourteen and fifty. Erastus, this may be the Erastus of Corinth, verse, chapter, Acts nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two, and also Second Timothy, chapter four, verse twenty, there's an Erastus name there. And concluding his warnings in seventeen through nineteen, he jumps into a warning, this puzzles me, puzzles a lot of people. He's going through greeting, 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 and then he goes into a warning, "I appeal to you, brothers, to watch out for those who cause division and create obstacles contrary to the doctrine that you have been taught, avoid them." Why does he do that? Well, three reasons, three possibilities. One, he's heard that the Judaizers are on their way to Rome to, to, to straighten them out so that they have to, so that those darned Gentiles will get circumcised and follow the food traditions, the dietary restrictions. Two, they're already there, and he's, so he's saying, "Hey, hey, don't buy into this." Three, he knows it's only a- Three, he knows it's only a matter of time before they get there, okay? Those are three possibilities. All of a sudden, after he's listed all these people, he's going, oh, by the way, Judaizers, they may be coming, but they are there, or something like that. So then he, then he jumps back into greetings, verse twenty, "The God of peace will soon crush Satan under your feet." Crushing Satan is putting the false teachers out of the fellowship, if in fact they're already in the fellowship. But it could also mean Satan needs to be put down, for example, in our baptismal service, we renounce the devil, the world, and all sinful desires. So it's, it's a routine piece of our own liturgy. Concludes with a benedict, "The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with you." Very interesting, because he kind of starts his letter out with that in, in Romans one, seven. "To all those in Rome who are loved by God and called to be saints, grace to you, peace from God our Father and our Lord Jesus Christ." So he concludes with a reminder of God's grace, Doxology, twenty-five through twenty-seven. "Now, to him who is able to strengthen you according to my gospel," et cetera, et cetera. This is the sound, this is sound Roman theology right here. Verse twenty-seven, "To the only wise God be glory forevermore through Jesus Christ." Amen. Now Paul is giving glory to God the Father, set forth in the truth of the gospel. Motivated by the Holy Spirit, Paul is bearing witness to the fact that we are monotheists, but we are Christ monotheists. I thought that was a fascinating statement that N.T. writes there. We are monotheists, but you have to understand, our monotheism is in Christ, it's through Christ. That's how we define monotheism. And that's his way of saying to those naysayers of three and one, he said, yeah, it's kind of strange, but, but you understand Christ, you understand three and one, and therefore our monotheism is driven by Christ, okay? Conclusion. This is what I would love for you guys to do over the next two weeks.
Are you giving us homework?
Yes. I waited to the end. Sometime you should write your own Romans sixteen, make a list as if in corresponding of, of all the Christians who have had an impact on your spiritual life, no matter how small or how great, whether you knew them or just heard about them, the list will grow and grow, but it will reveal how the Lord works through the different parts of His body to bring about unity in the faith through spiritual growth. That would be a great exercise. And I would love, when we gather together again in two weeks, for you to begin to sort of tell me how that list opened your eyes, and how grateful you are with, that the Lord has, what the Lord has done in and through other people for you. So that's the way we're gonna conclude it. Sol de gloria, God alone be the glory. Amen. Okay, I mean, write down your, for the next time we gather, write down your questions, comment your comments, let's have a, let's really have an interaction over the book of Romans, and we'll be, we'll be done, done.